The Escambia County Board of Education is now called to order. The mission of the Escambia County Schools is to provide learners with opportunities to graduate college and/or career-ready. At this time, we're going to ask Ms. Digman to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Can you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Digman. We want to also welcome all who are present here this afternoon. And again, first of all, thank you for coming, and we hope you can glean something from this that will be helpful to you as well as to your community.
And I also thank you all for being here in attendance, either in person or virtually in our live stream. But thank you so much for supporting our teachers and our leaders and our students in Escambia County.
Thank you, Dr. Collier. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and properly second that we approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Eyes have it, and so ordered. We're asking for approval of the minutes of our previous meetings. We have three here, July 3rd, 15th, and 31st. It's been moved and properly second that we approve the minutes of the following meetings, July 3rd, 15th, and 31st, 2025. All in favor? Opposers, nay. Eyes have it, and so ordered. Superintendent's remarks.
All right, so we, thank you so much. We have had a successful start to school. So I would also like to shout out to the 2025 baseball team for WS Neil. They are tied for six, or they were tied for six in the state for the all-academic team, having a 3.5 GPA. Jashawn Jones actually made the second team All-American with a 3.86. So it's wonderful to see our students that are excelling on the field, but also excelling in the classroom. So congratulations to WS Neil. Having something to brag about in the classroom is always the most fun. I want to also shout out to our CTE supervisor that's down the hall. So Dr. Cooper West has had us on the waiting list for nine months so that we could be a part of a very exciting event, October the 2nd and the 3rd. The Be Pro, Be Proud Truck and Trailer will be in Escambia County at Escambia County High School for two days. We will be setting up schedules with our students to do tours. They're about 30 minutes each, and so we'll do rotations for those students to be able to explore and experience the Be Pro, Be Proud, which is all about building up our career tech program. So thank you, Dr. West, for that good work. And then now, if I may, we have a couple of special recognitions.
You may.
So Ms. Charman O'Bannon, if you'll please come forward. I would like to recognize you. And Ms. Hendricks, please come with her as our employee of the month for August. She thought she'd, I kind of said to her principal, could you please get Charman here and just tell her she's got to be at this meeting because we have something important we're discussing.
Thank you.
So congratulations. Ms. Hendricks, would you like to share anything about why you nominated Ms. O'Bannon?
Well, so we had to send an email to, or submit a form to Dr. Collier, and it was someone that has really stood out to you and been very special to you and helped so much at your school. And I couldn't think of anybody more important than Charman. I could not have survived this year without her help. She came in even in the summer volunteer time, gave so much of her personal time to help our school, yours really successfully. And it has been wonderful, and we would not be where we are today without her.
Thank you. Okay, of course. I'm glad I wore my green dress tonight. You look beautiful.
Did y'all see her face when she was walking over here?
Thank you. So this is how our special employee recognitions will start each month. And so I was surprised you had another, you know, unknowing victim. Come onto a board meeting and we'll do some better recognition tomorrow. You should look for the Facebook post celebrating you, Charman. So we also have this month, we also have a classified employee that we'll recognize. She was unable to be with us tonight. That's Ms. Miriam Staple. She's actually a custodian at Rachel Patterson, and she was, Mr. Bob will take this and deliver this with her tomorrow. But both will get their shout-outs on Facebook tomorrow. So thank you so much. And I'm really looking forward to continuing our employee recognitions each month. So I hope to grow that too, to where, you know, maybe we'll do an elementary, a secondary, and a leader, as well as a classified staff and support. So look for some more announcements on next month's meeting. Thank you.
Our next item of business is informational item, review of our monthly financial report.
Yep, sorry. Let's break chairs. Let me get you straight, though. Hang on. Sorry, let me get you. I got you out of here. All right, and this will help you play a little bit more. I just want to give you a little bit more wiggle.
Good afternoon, board. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to give you the financial report ending for the month of June 25. These first five are just the monthly upload to the state's portal, generate the basic five financial reports. So starting here with the analysis of the general fund balance, if you look at the very, very bottom down here, unreserved fund balance at the end of June 25, it's a little bit over $23.4 million, comparing that to the previous month's balance, about a $3.4 million swing to the positive. Overall, our average monthly expenditures are hanging around $4.2, $4.3 million. So we ended the month at $5.46 months of operating reserve. I believe June was also the one where we got the A&amp;T funds to come in as well. I think last year it came in between June and, I think it came in August last year. See the big swing there? So overall, putting it in spreadsheet format, general fund, still in the dark green, everything looks fine. Taking that $4.298 million monthly reserve and dividing that by the $23.4 million puts us at the $5.6 months of monthly operating reserve. Comparing that reserve to where it was two years ago and last year, you can see last year, it's up about almost $7 million, $6.9 million. Again, a lot of that has to do with the state pouring a lot of extra money into, into the schools with additional grants, additional allocations, more increase in A&amp;T. So additional state funding has contributed a lot to that increase. Again, looking at the trend by monthly basis, you can see the trend did go back up as far as the trends there. Again, looking at the two-year trend chart, trend is still with a slight incline, which is good, not, nothing too steep, nothing too small. Just looking at the overall fund balance over the last 12 months, you can see, on average, it's hanging between $19 and $20 million once you add all those numbers together. As far as the total expenditures in the general fund, compared to a year ago this time, total expenditures are $1.19 million more compared to last year. Again, a lot of that has to do with increasing in A&amp;T, increasing of the grants that we receive. So we are spending more as far as in the general fund, but nothing is impacting as far as the overall fund balance. And then looking at the expenses in pie format, you can see almost 50% of our expenses go into instructional services, which is things dealing directly with the classroom there, instructional support services, or anything that supports our classroom. So that's where our building administrators are, counselors, social workers, et cetera, go in that, that piece of the pie there. And then that 9.2 green slice is child nutrition program and transportation. So when you add all three of those, I believe you're slightly over 76, 76 point something percent goes directly to benefiting our students, our general fund expenses. And that is the report. So everything looks, looks well, no surprises whatsoever.
Our financial report will be received as presented, subject-
I'm sorry, one more comment. The audit is, I'm sorry, the audit is scheduled to start next week.
On Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
Audit, audit. So that's September the 9th?
Yes, sir.
Will start in at more?
No, no, no.
No, okay. Not the-
Actual, actual.
The auditors will be here September the 2nd, which is Tuesday. But on, through the public board for the budget hearing.
All right, all right, that's different. Thank you for that update. The financial report will be received, will be received as presented, subject to audit. Consent items. Number one, approval of out-of-state trip for WS Neil High School FFA to attend the FFA National Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana, from October the 27th, 2025 through November the 1st, 2025.
My commission will approve.
Second. It's been moved and properly second that we approve item number one, approval of out-of-state trip for WS Neil High School FFA to attend the FFA National Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana, from October the 27th, 2025 through November 1st, 2025. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Eyes have it, and so ordered.
How many kids is it?
It's single digits.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, I was thinking it was less than 10. It's less than 10. And they have the teacher and the chaperone as well, male and female.
Yeah. I have a pop-up question. When our students go on these extended type of trips, what kind of facilities do, do they stay in in terms of quality of hotels?
I think they probably do a very good job of making sure that they're in a safe space. I don't have the specifics on where they've booked, because this is a little still far out, but they made, they've made some plans and some reservations. I know they're working on transportation for the kids, but it's a very protected space for sure. When we had our students go to Atlanta, they stayed in a very nice hotel with chaperones and, you know, Dr. Weston as well, you know, supporting that with Ms. Wilson.
Yeah. You hear so much of these things.
Yes, of course, of course. And thank you for being concerned about their safety and their well-being.
Thank you. Action items. Item number one, approval of 2025-2026 salary schedule. That was presented to us earlier-
During the work session.
During the work session.
Motion to approve.
I'd like to abstain.
I will also abstain from that as well.
It's been moved and properly second that we approve the 2025, uh, the 25, 2025 through 2026 salary schedule. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Eyes have it, and so ordered. Item number two, approval of contract with Pitt Dozer Service for site work for WS Neil Softball concession stand in the amount of $50,000 paid out of fiscal year 25 A&amp;T funds.
So thank you for those who could come out and support us during the groundbreaking, but this will be the first piece of work that we will do pending your approval, that groundwork, that site work.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and properly second that we approve the contract with Pitt Dozer Service for site work for WS Neil Softball concession stand in the amount of $50,000 paid out fiscal year A&amp;T funds. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Eyes have it, and so ordered. Item number three, approval of contract with Frontline Education for Time and Attendance Management in the amount of $31,763.80. And our funding source?
Is local.
Local sun funding.
If you can help me something different, local, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so this is a two-year price. It's roughly $16,000-ish each year. So this allows us to do the work that we need to do to change and upgrade our time system for employees clocking in, but it'll also directly feed into Next Gen. So it has a lot of great additional features for us that will put us into a better place as far as our time management.
And will we eliminate those?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Is this a, is this any type of renewal, or is all of this?
This one is brand new. We did not, we, we started with the sub-management piece, the absence tracking for our employees, and also for that allows us to, you know, contact substitutes and book those jobs. But that is one piece of it. This is the second piece of it. So this is the first time you've seen this one.
Okay. How's that, that tracking going with the other piece that we've?
The sub-management, absence management. So that, so what that does is, you know, we've talked about this at the table. What that'll do is, right now, people report their absences by texting their principal or texting their supervisor. This will allow them to report their absence in the system, and it will automatically put them in as a sick day or professional development day. That way, there's less human error, but also the time, we know where they're at, right? And so if someone just texts me that they're out, I might, Ms. Wilson might be looking for them, for example, but I'm the one who knew that they were out. So that's, that's what that program is for versus the other one is the time management. We'll actually report over directly.
Is this both of them together?
No, this is one piece of it, the sub-
So we'll have the other piece?
We have it, and so, right. So we are, we're having a meeting with them tomorrow.
The first piece.
First piece has already been paid for. We, yes, we've already paid for that. So this is that second piece to, will make everything make sense and report over in the next gen. We're meeting with them sometime tomorrow morning to do our initial discussions, and then that way we can work through kicking off that, those two systems.
So have we used the first piece any at all?
We have not.
So we, so we put, when did we purchase that?
We purchased it in December, January, last year. I think so. I think something like that, because we, but we, we got, we got a stop point where we had to stop, and so we're restarting that tomorrow, where we, we weren't able to provide the company with everything that they needed to be able to move us forward in a timely manner. So we are restarting that tomorrow.
Yeah, there was some confusion just along. Yeah, both companies, the Next Gen Harris, County Software, and Frontline are talking to each other tomorrow. There was some miscommunication as far as what data was needed to complete, get the setup completed.
And on that implementation.
But that's going on.
We have a meeting tomorrow, so we hope that, you know, with this kickoff again, we re-initiate our work to send them the data that they need, and then that way they can integrate into the systems.
So-
Our timeline on that is to be ready by the end of December and start these both in January.
So whenever we, whenever we purchase that in January, when, when are we supposed to renew that?
It won't be renewed until maybe two years, another, another year. It'll be like this time next year.
This time.
This time next year. Because your board approved it last time for the year, for the two years, just like this. So it'll be this time next year when they'll both come back up again, you know. But one will be already board-approved, but it'll be that we are in our second year at that point.
Okay. And so we, with the lapse in time from January to now, are we going to have enough time to meet that deadline before renewal?
Yes, so we have a timeline and an implementation schedule where we should have everything ready to go to transition both by the end of December, early January, so that'll be launched for our employees. On the employee side, it's not really any different than what they've been doing, which is clocking in. The other piece for them, though, is the tool that we're clocking in through, right? So they won't even see that part, they're just going to be clocking in. But when they report their absence, then it automatically knows they're out, and it knows what sick day they took, or personal day, or, you know, PD day or whatever.
That's just the data problem that we had got going into our-
Yes.
Okay.
And so that hopefully will, will be able to resolve quickly.
I know when we talked about it last time, we heard good things about the software and being able to, because, you know-
There's so many things that it will reduce as far as human time, right? And the physical, you know, documentation's-
Need to get it operating.
Just got to get going. So we kick off again tomorrow, and we have all, us plus the two companies meeting together.
Was, were they putting us on hold? Did they put any type of penalty on us?
No, they did not.
Or at all?
Okay, so we're scheduled for this to start tomorrow, the installation to start tomorrow. And we should be up and running?
I would say that in January. Yes, I mean, because we have it timed lined out where we'll be finished with this part, and they're ready to roll and launch it in January.
That's a lot of, I mean, data.
Yes, yes. But it's on our employee side, on our employee side, it's not, it won't be very different. And then it's just about teaching them how to, they either go to the website and report their absence, or they call the phone number and report their absence. So that part won't be a learning curve for our employees.
And the other part of that is making sure we have an active substitute list.
Yes.
We have a lone substitute list, but a lot of them are not active, so we're going to get that, that initial list cleaned up, so we have active substitute list in the system, so it's not calling a nomad.
That's nobody's insurance. And then the other side, the benefit of this is that a lot of school systems use this system, and employees will be, better substitutes will be very familiar with it, and will, will find us and know that we have jobs that are posted. So that's going to be, hopefully helps us recruit good substitutes that would like to be in our area as well.
Okay, a lot of benefits.
How many things do we have by frontline? Just the only two?
Now, we have Asset Essentials, which does our work order system with Mr. Goolsby's team. So we do have that, that does our work orders, and, and it's called Asset Essentials, right? And that's about $11,000 a year for a cost on that. It's not a very big cost, but it's a great system that actually, you know, I think it's been three years that we've been using it, and our employees can put in the work orders, it's approved by the bookkeeper, the principal, and then it routes to the technician that's able to assign it to the responsible person to go work on that request. And then it communicates back and forth with the principal and/or the person that put the work order in.
Okay, just for clarity, it's been moved and properly second and discussed, item number three, that is approval of contract with Frontline Education for Time and Attendance Management in the amount of $31,763.80. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Eyes have it, and so ordered. Thank you. Item number four, approval to renew Block C proprietary AI Pure Cloud solution for K-12 virtual classroom management, content filtering, device management, student safety, and analytics in the amount of $81,810 funding through the fiscal year 25 A&amp;T funds.
So this is three-year pricing. We've had Block C for four years, I believe. It does monitor our usage of our computers, both for employees and for students, but it most importantly serves as a tool that whenever someone puts in something inappropriate, it alerts the appropriate person, be it the nurse, the social worker, the counselor, the assistant principals, the principals, so that we can all help and respond if there's a crisis of any type. So this is a great benefit for us, and it helps us to also, for example, so if we say that we don't want them on games.com, okay, we can block that at the district level using Block C. But they could also, a classroom teacher can say, hey, I only want you using Discovery Education today, and that's the only site they can get to. So it's very customizable from the top all the way down to the teacher level.
So I got a one question about that. The, I hear a lot of feedback on, you know, after we've taken the cell phones out of the, you know, out of our schools last year, now it's state mandated. I hear a lot of feedback of, of kids being able to navigate around and still be able to get on like Snapchat, see emails and stuff like, is this something that, that can catch that?
It is, and it can monitor it, so it can also report those things so that we know, because they're using proxies and they're doing, they're, they're going around the filter, right? So there's always things that you're having to constantly, that's why we have to monitor it. We have to constantly make adjustments and changes in technology. As soon as you learn one site, just like I mentioned, games.com, there's another one that's called games with a one or something in it, you know, .com. It's the same thing, just rerouted so that we wouldn't have it blocked.
So do we have to physically monitor that, or is that the program?
The program does it for us. Yeah, it sends us alerts, it lets us know the most dangerous searches that are happening, it lets us know the most common websites that are being visited, but it also gives us those sites that we know that we have to go and restrict and work on. And then we also have our teachers that send us and say, hey, you know, we need this open because like YouTube, okay? So they want to be able to access that. Well, as soon as you open that, you've opened up a whole lot of things, right? So we open up what they need from there using this tool. Thank you for asking.
Now, I'm always, I'm a skeptic about AI. We've been using AI in several of our software packages. What kind of accuracy are we getting?
Well, I think the tool, because it's been around probably since the internet was existing, you know, it's just getting smarter and smarter, right? About how it can combine that information for us, it can kind of send us that, even how it collapses and says these five students have searched some risky things, right? So we can look at those things and be more mindful. I just think it helps us to be more prepared and more responsive.
Okay, good point, good point. May I have a motion concerning-
Motion approved.
Second. It's been moved and properly second to approve the, to renew the Block C proprietary AI Pure Cloud solution for K-12 virtual classroom management, content filtering, device management, student safety, and analytics in the amount of $81,810 coming out of the fiscal year 25 A&amp;T funds. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Eyes have it, and so ordered. Item five, approval of contract with Spiro Behavioral Coaching and Supports LLC to provide classroom behavioral management, training supports, and professional development in the amount of $31,850 paid for from Title II.
So this, we've had Dr. Alday before, that is his company is the Spiro Behavioral Coaching. He will come in and provide observations, but he'll also provide trainings and also supports in some strategies in some areas where we're struggling with classroom management. So he's a great partner, he is a licensed BCBA, so he comes to us from the University of South Alabama, having all the credentials that help us when that's a position that we don't have on staff, that can really help us support our teachers with students that are struggling with behaviors.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and properly second that we approve item number five, approval of contract with Spiro Behavioral Coaching and Support LLC to provide classroom behavioral management, training, supports, and professional development in the amount of $31,850 paid for from the Title II funding. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Eyes have it, and so for, so moved. Item six, approval of the 25, 25, 26 renewal of ATBE Automobile Fund participation in the amount of $73,323.65.
So this ATBE policy provides our insurance on our school buses. I think there's like 81 buses in the transportation. So this is super needed, and we do pay for it on a local, but this is, this continues that service that we have with, with ATBE.
Right, now that, that come-
I think there's like eighty-one, um, buses in the transportation, so this is super needed and we did pay for it on a local. Um, but this is, um, this continues that service that we have with, um, with ATBE.
Right, now, does that come out of local funds?
Local fund, yes, sir.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded that we approve item number six, approval of twenty, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six renewal of ATBE Automobile Fund Participation in the amount of seventy-three thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Eyes have it and so ordered. Item seven, approval of purchase of virtual reality headsets with CTE content from Avantis Education Incorporated for the Escambia Career Ready, uh, Center in the amount of twenty-five thousand fifty-one dollars paid out of the supplemental O and M funds.
So this is a really exciting part that we'll be adding, um, with the funding, uh, to be able to provide virtual reality with the correct content. As you notice, this has got CTE content, so those are specifically built to help enhance and support those programs. It's gonna, that is gonna be a really great thing to watch and see. I can't wait for these to come in and see what the kids do with them.
Motion to approve.
Second. We've moved them properly seconded that we approve item number seven, which is the approval of purchase of virtual reality headsets with CTE content from Av- Avantis Education Incorporated for the Escambia County Career Ready Center in the amount of twenty-five thousand fifty-one dollars paid out of the supplemental O and M funds. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Eyes have it and so ordered. I, I have a question that's not quite listed here. Are we, excuse me, through our career readiness program, are we working, uh, with the Escambia County Airport in any way to, for our student training?
So, um, not with the career readiness center, but with the Atmore Airport. Uh, we are working to, uh, work with Coastal, um, the aviation technology program that they're gonna offer to our students. Um, we're really excited about it. It's gonna bring great opportunities to our students. Uh, when they come out of that two-year program, uh, which will start in January. When they come out of that two-year program, then they will be, make, they can earn, um, thirty-six to thirty-eight dollars an hour, um, coming out with aviation maintenance, um, as an aviation maintenance technician. Um, so that is a great opportunity that we'll offer as a part of our partnership with the airport, but also with Coastal.
That's great.
So we're, we're really excited about it. We do have some work to do to help be ready, but we'll be ready by January for us to have classes there at the airport. Yeah, it's gonna be awesome. We'll have to do a tour when that's ready.
All right, good news. Item number ten, miscellaneous, approval of the payment of the bills and payroll. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the payment of bills and payroll. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. Eyes have it and so ordered. Personnel.
So you'll notice on your sheet, the yellow highlights, Ms. Lucas has done a fantastic job of making sure any late additions are highlighted for you per your request. So thank you, Ms. Lucas, but, um, please take a moment to review. Uh, we, there's not a large number. It's not, um, but it is just a few that are very important and we're looking forward to seeing them soon. We are literally actively recruiting and hiring, but, um, Mr. Jones has done an excellent job of, uh, reaching out. We have some new applicants even today that, uh, we'll bring to you probably. Maybe slip a few personnel matters in on our next meeting when we do our budget hearings. But we do, we're doing a good job. We're, we're not in bad shape for, um, you know, having, uh, bus drivers and, and also bus aides too that we need. So we've been doing a lot of active recruiting. We've got those incentives that we've been offering to, uh, an employee that brings us another potential bus driver. If we hire them, they get a two hundred dollar, I mean, two hundred dollars or, um, bonus, you know, for doing so. Thank you.
Are we sure any bus drivers?
Uh, right now, we're covering everything. We do have a couple of spaces we do need to add and we have some upcoming retirements where we'll have to also do that. You know, our, um, our bus drivers are, you know, super needed. They're the first things our students see in the morning uh, and the last things that they see in the afternoons before they go home. So, uh, we want, you know, we're looking for always great people that we can bring on board.
A motion to approve personnel. Been moved and properly seconded that we approve personnel recommendations. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. Eyes have it and so ordered. Uh, at this time, we are, um, going to go into executive session. Our attorney is here.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, I'm as counsel for the board. I hereby startify that, uh, the purpose of going to, into executive session is to discuss potential litigation as well as to have a, a hearing involving the minor.
Thank you. We, uh, have, we received the permission and the direction of our counsel.
Motion to go into executive session.
Been moved and properly seconded that we go into executive session. All in favor? Oppusers, nay. Eyes have it and so ordered. Thank you. May I have a motion to, uh, adjourn the executive session and reconvene the, uh, regular board meeting?
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we adjourn the executive session and reconvene our regular board meeting. All in favor? Oppusers, nay. Eyes have it and so ordered. Thank you so very, very much. At this point, I should ask
Is there any action that the board wishes to take?
Is there any action?
There is. The board, having considered all non-IDEA and non-five oh four grievance issues presented on behalf of student SW, I make a motion that the board, through and by Chairman Coleman Wallace, submit a written response to the parent of SW per the grievance procedure stating that the board rejects and denies all non-IDEA and non-five oh four grievance topics and issues presented at today's grievance hearing and stating that no further action will be taken by the board as to these matters.
We have a recommendation coming from the board. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we receive the.
Who is it? Mr. Holmes made the motion.
I made the motion. Who seconded it?
So we just need a.
Mr. Dawkins made the second, yeah.
Been moved and properly seconded that we received this, uh, statement made by our vice chair, Mr. Holmes. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Eyes have it and so ordered.
I got the question.
He abstains.
Abstain.
One, one abstinence. One, one abs- person abstaining.
We're good.
Okay, this all is noted? Anything else we can?
So the board was, the vote was six to zero with one extension.
Yes.
One extension, okay. Let the record show. All right, let's, uh, try to clean up our housekeeping.
Okay. Uh, we have our budget hearings on September ninth. Um, that is, um, the first one will be in Atmore at ten AM and the second one is, um, let me get my times here right. Uh, we're doing the budget hearing at, um, ten AM for Atmore and then, um, we have the two o'clock in Bruton.
Oh, is that two?
Yes, ma'am, and then, um.
I thought it was two.
I think it's two to three. Two to three? If you, do you wanna do three instead? We can do, I mean, I, I just need to update your time on your, on your, um, sheet. You wanna do three instead? And then do that, because I was giving us time to have a brief break and then we'll have our meeting right to follow.
Two, two is okay.
Two's fine, okay. Okay, it may have been my fault. It may have been my fault.
The afternoon, the budget.
Yeah, the budget hearing, um, so in Atmore, we'll need at least four. Um, I know.
It's ten o'clock?
Yes. Ten o'clock, one, two, three.
Three.
We can make our four. Miss, any, you're not sure yet?
Um, I'll try my best. I'll, I'll let you know for sure.
Yes, ma'am. All right, and then, um, I'm not worried about the afternoon because we'll convene here in Bruton and then we'll have our meeting to follow.
Okay, and what time is our, is that at?
It'll fall, it'll follow after, so I figure by four, we would have it. We'll just advertise it as to follow.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, and that way we're done. Okay. And that should be a short meeting too. You'll have to approve the budget and we may have a couple of items, uh, as far as personnel goes. Okay. And then, um, reminder that there on the sixteenth is our District One meeting, uh, with A S B at Saraland at the Early Learning Center.
They changed the time on that.
Eight thirty.
Yeah, they started that, they started.
Five forty-five.
Five forty-five, right.
Because they'll be serving dinner, I think, at six. Um, and then, um, some awards and whatnot. So that's, I have it at five forty-five.
Okay.
And so I will also have, that'll be on your weekly, you know, newsletter I sent to you, and then also on the twenty-fifth is our regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay.
Is that gonna be?
And that's, um, we had not decided a location, but.
Well, let's, let's do it in, this.
Twenty-fifth?
Yeah, let's do it in Atmore.
Why do it in Atmore?
Yeah, we've been here the last two meetings.
We have been, we have been, so we can do Atmore. It'll be the four thirty. Uh, I'll let you know about a work session if we need to schedule one.
And what was that, nine, what?
Uh, so the ninth, we're doing it at ten o'clock in Atmore and then two in Bruton. That's the, the budget hearings, but the twenty-fifth is our regularly scheduled meeting.
Ah, twenty-five.
Yep, and that'll be at four thirty and we'll do Atmore. Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much.
What time, Dr. Fire, will our budget hearing be here in Bruton?
Two.
Two.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we having a workshop on the?
That's, I think I had buffered in time if we needed to do a brief one before we would have our to follow, so I'll finalize all that, make sure. Um, and that way we have everything that we need for the meeting. Uh, we may be able to get away without one and then just have a meeting right to follow, okay? But I'll let you know for sure. I don't, I do expect a couple of personnel matters, but not very much as far as, we won't put items on there except approving the budget, okay? Unless it's an emergency.
Now, what's the second? What's, what are we doing on nine, two?
The second is when the audit restarts here.
Audit.
That's no meeting for you. We didn't have to have any kind of meeting, um, as far as bringing the board back in because we've already initiated that. We're just restarting the audit on the second and they'll be here in our office working.
Oh, okay, okay, audit team.
Yep, the audit team will be here and they'll be here for the next, you know, little bit.
Okay.
Hopefully not, but I mean, the next little bit, yeah, we'll go with positive. All right, thank you.
All right, all minds are clear? The board is now, I mean, the meeting is declared. Adjourned. Thank you.